Good afternoon and welcome to the Spokane City Council briefing session for October 4th. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll?
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
President.
Councilmember Kinnear.
President.
Councilmember Mum.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
President.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Stratton is absent.
And we are expecting her shortly, but thought we would get started. Mr. Ormsby, I'll turn it over to you for the October 11th advance briefing.
Thank you, Council President, and Council President Protem Mum did an outstanding job in your absence, but I think I speak for all of us in saying it's good to see that you're back and in full voice. So, good to see you.
Thank you.
And hear you.
Great to be here.
Let me start with the consent agenda. And under Reports, Contracts, and Claims, the first is a proposed value blanket renewal for the waste energy facility, and David Kane is here to brief this item.
Good afternoon, Council President, Councilmembers. This is a value blanket renewal with Halfridge Brothers Boiler Works of Lawrence, Mass. For $650,000 to purchase boiler tube as needed for repairs to be made inside the boilers here at the waste energy plant. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next is a proposed contract amendment for professional services and support of the city's capital project management software, and Kyle Tuig, our Director of Engineering Services, is here to present this item.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. Item number two is a contract amendment with PM Tech, doing business with PM Web, for professional services in support of the city's capital project management software. This is an amendment for $23,125 plus tax.
Any questions of Kyle? You're not seeing any, thank you, Kyle. Item number three is a cost amendment in an existing contract for bacteriological and chemical analysis of drinking water, and Doug Greenland is here to present this item.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. Yes, an additional $8,500 to add to the Water Department line item for the existing analytical services contract with Anatech. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doug. Next, item number four is a contract renewal for testing for wastewater and stormwater, and Mike Cannon is here to present this item.
Hi, good afternoon, Council. This item is for council approval to renew a second renewal of a contract with ALS Environmental to provide the specialized testing for water and wastewater for PCVs and the likes at a yearly cost of $55,930 plus applicable taxes. Any questions?
Thank you, Mike. The next proposed agreement is a consultant agreement for the development of a link strategy for the city's water system, and Marcia Davis from Integrated Capital Management is here to present this item.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. GHD was selected using the city's procurement process to compete, complete the link utility strategy for water. The goal of the strategy is to develop a plan for the city of Spokane's water system that will meet all the demands for the next 20 years, as well as create a sustainable, resilient, and affordable future that is endorsed by key stakeholders. The final outcome of this project will be the update of the 20-year facility plan for water and to give recommendations for revisions to the city's design standards, as well as the Spokane Municipal Code. This code was reviewed and discussed with council staff, specifically Cara Odegaard and Brian McClatchy, to reflect the city council's areas of interest. The work of this contract is scheduled to begin this month and to be completed by the end of 2023. The total contract amount is $592,646. Questions?
Any questions for Marcia? Thank you, Marcia. The next two items relate to the waste energy facility. There are three proposed interlocal agreements, and then an agreement with Quikattack County for disposal at their landfill. And so, Chris, I guess it's not Quikattack County, it's Regional Disposal Company, but it's in Quikattack County. Chris Avert from Solid Waste is here to break this item.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. Today, I'm seeking approval for five-year extensions of the Solid Waste interlocal agreements with the City of Cheney, City of Medical Lake, and City of Airway Heights. This agreement applies to only collection vehicles, so all customers will be charged a current gate rate. The terms and conditions of the previous agreements remain in place with estimated annual revenues of $500,000 for Cheney, $160,000 for Medical Lake, and $500,000 for Airway Heights. Are there any questions? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Councilwoman Wilkerson.
Thank you, thank you, Chris. And just help me walk through this. So, it's a five-year contract. How do we adjust for increases?
The pricing formula is based off the Labor and Industries West Coast BC CPI index. So, each year, based off that index, an annual increase will apply.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other?
The next item is a one-year extension with Republic Services for transportation, disposal of bypassed waste, non-burnable waste, and incinerator ash. The terms and conditions of the prior agreement remain in place with the exception that the price increase will be held at 3% rather than utilizing the CPI index. The amount of this one-year extension is $8,500,000, including taxes. And any questions on that item? Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. The next two items are placeholders. The first is the report of the mayor on both claims and payments for all city departments, and also payroll claims. And then, item number nine is a placeholder for council meeting minutes or review and approval by the council at your next meeting. Then move next to resolutions and final reading ordinances. First is a resolution regarding delinquent accounts and extensions of time, and Marlene Feist, our Director of Streets and Utilities, is here to brief this item.
Good afternoon, Council. So, as we discussed at the PIES meeting last week, the statewide moratorium on water shut-offs and late fees for utilities like ours ends on September 30th. We would like to offer our CD customers some time to either pay us what they owe or to enter into payment arrangements before we go to those more dramatic actions against those customers. So, we're asking you to support a resolution adding six months of time to, for those customers to seek those payment arrangements or to pay us what they owe. We're also encouraging the use of programs that exist today, including the rental assistance dollars, which can also be used to provide utility payments. And then, there's some other federal programs that are headed that way, and potentially other resources that we'd like to promote for customers who are in situations where they would need some support.
Any questions for Marlene? Thank you, Marlene. Next is proposed ordinance, a first reading of an ordinance, providing for adjustment to the City of Spokane's business registration fee and amending the appropriate SMC. And Tanya Wallace, our Chief Financial Officer, is here to brief this item. I'm Tanya.
Good afternoon, City Councilmembers. The proposed increase into our public registration fees was first proposed to you at the FNA Committee on September 20th, and there were some questions that were asked, and we had responded to those questions. So, what you have in front of you is a fee increase according to the CPI and according to SMC to increase that business registration fee to $127, and then for the reduced rate of $63.50. We did not increase in 2021, we did skip that year, so this is still under what they would have been otherwise. Questions, City Council?
Councilmember Mum.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm glad we are having a conversation about this, because the more I thought about it, is this really what we want to do at the city right now with businesses coming out of COVID? And so, what I'd like to propose, and I'm going to send around a revised amendment for other people to talk about, is having somewhat of a business registration, new business registration break for new businesses that want to start up in, you know, the next nine months or so, and we would maybe give them 50% off for any new business up until June of next year. And then, these increases also, because we know our businesses have had such a hard hit, and they don't just pay this fee, but they also pay the per-person tax as well, if maybe we just held off on implementing this until that same June. And then, at that point, the council can look at what the numbers are, how many people put in for new businesses. I know a lot of people, when COVID was happening, were thinking about starting up a new business, and this would just sort of be an incentive for them. And so, I just wanted to get your feedback, Tanya, and then other councilmembers' feedback about this idea as well.
Well, this really is the city council's prerogative. The business registration fees bring in about $4 million annually, and the proposed increase is about $144,000. So, if that aids in your decision-making, but we certainly support what the council wants to do in the direction they want to go.
Tanya, just clarity, the increases will net $144,000 across the spectrum there?
Correct.
Okay. So, that'd be lost revenue for year 2022.
Correct.
Thank you.
That'll only be for 50% of the year, so probably half of that, because what I'm proposing is till June.
I think Councilmember Cathcart has a question.
Yeah, thank you. No, I was just going to agree somewhat with Councilwoman Mum. I think something, some sort of an incentive program for new business makes a ton of sense, and I'm really just personally not comfortable increasing the rate on business at this point in time. But I do think that there's, you know, some different avenues that we should be exploring, such as what she had presented. So, I'd definitely be open to that conversation and kind of see where that takes us.
Councilwoman Stratton.
I would agree with Councilmember Cathcart. I think this would be a really good opportunity for the city to say to new businesses, you know, give them a break. We've all surviving, or we're surviving COVID. Hopefully, we'll be further down the road by then. But what a great way to make it a little bit easier for a businessperson that wants to, may have been at home during COVID and come up with a plan to open a business, and I think it's the right thing to do. So, I would support that discussion.
I'll also say we could have a conversation down the road about ARPA eligibility for this as well, if that was something that would help, but I think we need to do it right away. I don't think we should wait until it goes to the ARPA process.
Councilwoman Wilkerson.
Thank you. So, I just want to weigh in, because I did sponsor this, and Tanya and I had a discussion about increasing fees, the cost of doing business for the city, and everything that has gone up around this. However, with just losing $144,000 or less, it would probably be goodwill to all of our businesses for deferral this year. So, I would certainly entertain the conversation and see where that takes us.
Great. Send me your ideas, and we'll process them and come up with something new to hopefully have an amendment for this. Thank you for all the support.
Council President and Councilmembers, that presentation concludes the proposed advanced agenda for October 11th.
Is there a motion to approve the advanced agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the advanced agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Okay, advanced agenda is approved. Also, just a reminder for the listening public, is that next week is one, we're going to celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day on Monday as well, and the mayor is going to bring her State of the City address to us next week as well. So, there's not a lot going on legislatively, but we are looking forward to interesting addresses from both the Native American community and our annual State of the City from the mayor's office. So, thanks for that. And then, today, I think there was at least one request to suspend the rules to add a item to the consent agenda, which would be item number five, and it would be a reimbursement amount of money to the city for installing pipe near the Geiger roundabout interchange near Amazon. But in order to do that, we would need to suspend the rules. So, I'm looking for a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules. Any discussion about suspending the rules? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any extensions? Okay, the rules are suspended. Is there a motion to add item number five, OPR 0168, to today's consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Second.
All right, any discussion about adding? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Aye.
Any extensions? All right, item five is added. I had two proposed changes to the agenda. One was, we have a Resolution 0073 regarding requiring parking kiosks in the downtown retail core. Since our last meeting, we had a chance to meet with the Parking Advisory Committee, and they weighed in and are opposed to that resolution. They would prefer to have the single and dual new meters, and so, I'm looking for a motion to table that resolution indefinitely.
So moved. So moved.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion about tabling that motion, that resolution? All right, all those in favor of tabling indefinitely, 0073, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Any extensions? And then, similarly, we have
Go ahead.
special item number two of purchasing meters, which we wanted to wait until we figured out the resolution, but since that is no longer pending before us, I'm looking for a motion to put it back on the consent agenda for today. And that's
So moved.
Okay, O502, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion about putting it back on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Any extensions? Okay, that's back on the consent agenda. And Councilmember Wilkerson.
Council President. Yes, ordinance C 36064 on the reuse of restored properties. I'd like to make a deferral on that. Only reached out to us, and they had not completed their analysis to move this forward. So, at this point in time, I'd like to table that.
Do you want to table it for two weeks and then give them a chance to come to your committee and explain it? And
Yes, that'd be perfect.
All right, so let's, motion is to defer that until the October 18th council meeting, and an opportunity for staff to weigh in at the Finance Administration Committee. So, that's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All right, all those in favor of deferring until the 18th legislative session indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any extensions? All right, that's deferred.
Councilmember Stratton. Yeah.
Are we still taking motions?
We are.
I would like to make a motion to defer for two weeks. I don't know what that date is, but it's
The 18th.
Okay, the 18th, Resolution 2021 0069. That's in regards to the Salvation Army and the Way Out Shelter. The reason I'm suggesting this is that there are still some pretty important discussions going on regarding this, especially regarding plans for the future of any low-barrier shelters that have been discussed on the bottom two floors. We're still getting comments from the businesses in the neighborhood. I think we're getting close, but I think we need to have a couple more discussions regarding the Good Neighbor Agreement. And I think it would make for a better resolution with more input from a few more folks before we take a final vote on this. So, I would make a motion that we defer it for two weeks.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to defer consideration of Resolution 69 until October 18th legislative session. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Kinnear.
Thanks. I had a conversation with the administration this afternoon, and I submitted an amendment to the resolution four minutes to noon today, which noon is our cutoff. And essentially, the amendment would have meant that the money could not be used until a Good Neighbor Agreement that was agreed to by all parties was in place. So, to keep deferring this, I'm not su, I think we can get there with an amendment to this resolution. I don't think we have to defer, keep deferring this, because having the money not being able to be used is the same, actually, it's better, because it's pushing people to move a little bit faster to get a Good Neighbor Agreement in place. So, I would ask you to consider that instead of deferring something that we've been deferring. I'm not aware of how many times we've deferred this, maybe four, maybe three times? I don't know. But I would ask that we be a little bit more thoughtful about this and get some stuff in place that prevents the money from being used unless we, the council, agree that the Good Neighbor Agreement is in place and is enforceable.
Councilmember Stratton.
Councilmember Kinnear, thank you, I appreciate that, and I understand your comments. I'm also going to ask Councilmember Cathcart to weigh in. I think the crux of this whole issue is, one part is that Good Neighbor Agreement. We've had many talks about what that should look like and who should be involved in helping put that together. I understand that. The other piece that I think there's confusion and there's a need for further discussion is the use of those two bottom floors being used as low-barrier shelter during heat and cold months. That is an issue that doesn't necessarily fit into a Good Neighbor Agreement, but it's more of a policy practice that I think needs to be discussed, and we need to make sure that what we show the neighborhood, what we give to the neighborhood, is what they have been recommending, what they have been working towards. So, to me, I have no problem with the Good Neighbor Agreement piece. I have no problem with the funding piece with that, but I do have a problem that we have not come to any kind of consensus on, is that going to be used as a low-barrier shelter? And how does that fit into the agreement? And does, and will Salvation Army support that? So, I'm just asking that the individuals, that we at least honor the people that are still talking to us, we're sharing back and forth with the neighborhood and the businesses some of these suggestions. And I just, I think if we can have two more weeks to find out where that low-barrier shelter conversation is going to go, I think I would feel better representing those people in my district on this issue. Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, thank you. I guess I would just concur with most all of what you had just shared, Councilwoman Stratton. I think, you know, part of the conversation is the Good Neighbor Agreement, and I don't think, I know there's a lot of folks who are putting in a lot of effort and time to try and craft something, but it really feels like it's being rushed to the point where we're not necessarily going to get the outcomes that, I guess, that I hope for, and I think that probably all of us are hoping for, out of a Good Neighbor Agreement, especially if we want it to be something that would be potentially applicable in other parts of our community. And so, I just want to make sure that we're taking our time to get that part of it right. My other concern is, you know, there's never been a hearings process or any sort of public, real, truly, true public engagement process over the use, particularly the use of the basement, over whether that would be a low barrier or an emergency sheltering site. Last year, there were 129 days out of the year where, you know, technically, you had the potential for having shelters open as emergency shelters. And so, you know, is that going to be a third of the year used for this other purpose? And is that purpose incompatible with the bridge housing that I think we all really support and really want to see happen there? Or is it, you know, or is there other uses that might be more complementary to bridge housing, wraparound services, or even just expanded bridge housing? And I think that those would be far more complementary to the use of that building, as well as the neighbors and the folks that are in the vicinity of that location, who've not really had the opportunity to express themselves. And so, I think a deferral makes sense, because I just really want to make sure that we get it right. It's just not, none of this is trying to be anti-anything, it's really just trying to make sure that we have the right use in this location, that the neighborhood is having their opportunity to be heard, and that, you know, we just, we get this right. And I don't want to rush it, and to the detriment of the bridge housing that hopefully we'll see there soon. So, that's kind of where I'm coming from on this, and I just hope we can find a good solution.
I saw Councilmember Kinnear's hand first, and then Councilmember Wilkerson. Councilmember Kinnear.
Thanks. Not to belabor this, but Not to belabor this, but any kind of low-barrier shelter that would take place in this facility would need funding. And I'm imagining the Salvation Army would come to us for that funding. So that is the check and the balance where we can say no on that low-barrier shelter in the basement. So that's not, I see this as two separate issues. One issue is getting the bridge housing up and running, so that's actually being used, and having a good neighbor agreement associated with that and those funds. So essentially, I think we're talking about the same thing. Some of you would like to defer that, and I understand that, for two weeks, but this has been going on so long. Administration has had so much time to deal with this, and I think now is, what we're saying is defer it, or what I'm saying is, you can't use this money until you have an agreement in place. So we're going at the same, we're wanting the same thing, but we're going about it in two different ways. And we're mixing in the low-barrier piece when in reality, we, the council, would have to approve any funding for that low-barrier shelter. So we have the ultimate check in that piece of balance.
The only thing I would just come back with on that is just
Just Councilmember Cathcart, I got Councilmember Wilkerson and Mum before you.
Oh, sorry.
Then I'll come back. That's fine. Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you. So as the sponsor of this, which started back at the end of July, so it's gone through July and September, and I have supported deferrals, hoping the administration and the neighborhood could come to some type of good neighbor agreement, and as Councilmember Cathcart said, a framework for our other providers around this. But there needs, it has to be separated. For that low-barrier shelter to come in, I believe it'd have to go out for RFP, and then it would need the funding going forward. The challenge I have is, the people who will be served at the bridge housing is being held hostage, do some missteps from administration, and maybe some promises made from council because this funding did not go through the normal process. But we have such a terrible reputation of keeping our word at city council. I want to be supportive, and I want to keep our word, Councilmember Cathcart and Strattan to the neighbors. But at this point, if the money will be held until the agreement is completed, then it really is another way to go forward. That gives the administration a little bit more fire to make this work out. But let's not penalize the people who'll be using that bridge housing through no fault of their own is caught in the crosshairs of administration and council.
All right. Councilmember Mum, and then Councilmember Cathcart.
I'm wondering if we can break this logjam by making an amendment to it before we defer it, then we can have two separate decisions. That's just an idea.
My motion was to defer it.
To just defer it? Okay. So not open to an amendment while we're waiting to decide whether to defer it?
I'm not. If somebody else wants to, but I'm not. I think the whole thing needs to be, I need to say something here. This is my district. These are, the Emerson Garfield neighborhood is a neighborhood that both Candace Mum and myself have worked very, very closely with. They have never been given any wrong direction by either one of us. When this started, we stuck with the neighborhood and those businesses with the agreement was that they welcomed the good, the bridge housing. They welcomed that. It happened fast, they didn't get a lot of input, but they welcomed that bridge housing. And then it opened up before as a shelter, as an emergency shelter, with no agreement with the city, no partnerships in place, nobody to call if there were issues. So this whole thing from the beginning to right now has been a disaster. And I say that with all sincerity. It has been a disaster. And so to me, who's to say if we give this money now, and we're working on a good neighbor agreement, and what happens if the nonprofit involved, the Salvation Army, gets money from another organization or another group to offer shelter services in bad weather? Do they have to get approval from the city? I don't know that. I know that as long as I've been on council, every time, because we don't have a plan in place for emergency shelters, we just haven't done it, it's all emergency, and we tend to, the administration will move fast and quick to get people housed, and we're not paying attention with, you know, who gets, who gets the brunt of that decision? What neighborhood is suffering, and what businesses are suffering? So when I look at this, I just see a disaster down the road. If we don't stand firm and say, we have got to look at this agreement, we have council members and neighborhood and businesses in that area that did not want it used, that were never told it was going to be used as a low-barrier shelter, and protect that, we're going to be in trouble because you all know as well as I do that when we get that call that it's below freezing and we don't have enough beds, everybody panics, and we open up those places that we necessarily, that we shouldn't necessarily open up. So all I'm saying is to take it off the agenda tonight, give us two weeks to get some more input, and to see how, I would like to protect that, the housing part of it, I have, the neighborhood doesn't have a problem with that, but I'd like to have some kind of assurances that it's not going to become a last-minute emergency, open-it-up shelter, because that's what got us in trouble the first time.
Councilmember Cathcart, thanks for your patience. Councilmember Strattan was asked as the sponsor of the motion, some questions about amendment, and she responded broadly. So thanks for your patience, but go ahead, Councilmember Cathcart, and then Councilmember Wilkerson is next.
Yeah, in fact, Councilwoman Strattan really, I think, hit the nail on the head in terms of what I was going to say, and that's just, in an emergency situation, a lot of last-minute decisions are made, and there's not a lot of time to be really thoughtful in the decision-making process. But right now, we can be, and I think that's part of kind of this insistence on doing this the right way, is that piece of it. So she really kind of hit the nail on the head with where I was going.
All right. And Councilmember Wilkerson.
Well, just for clarity, again, we don't own that building. That is owned by the Salvation Army, and I am hearing Karen and Michael loud and clear, which is why I have supported the deferments, to really get that community engagement from businesses and neighbors. But we do not own that building. If the Salvation Army chooses to put a low-barrier shelter in there that's not funded from the city, that could come from the county, really, I don't see where we would have a say in that at all. We would not have a way to stop that. So I would like to get as much assurances as we can, but again, we don't own that property, and we don't control what happens. We control the bridge housing piece, but anything else is out of our control from a business perspective.
All right. So the motion before us is to defer this resolution until October 18th. And if there's no further discussion, I'll take a vote, and if you would indicate if you're in favor by saying aye, but also raise your hand. So all those in favor, aye for a two-week deferral.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Any opposed? Nay? Raise your hand. Okay. So it looks like five to two in favor of deferral until October 18th. Councilmember Mum.
Councilmember Kinnear, would you like to make a motion on your amendment?
Well, it seems kind of pointless now, but I can.
Try it.
All right. So my amendment would be, funding will be contingent on finalization and acceptance of a good neighbor agreement.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, so just for clarification, so the measure is deferred two weeks, but the measure that is being deferred would include this amendment? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I had a question about your amendment. It said approval. Do you mean, oh, sorry.
You're on mute, Brian.
Yep. I was trying to protect you. I had a question for you, Councilmember Kinnear, and your intent of your amendment. You said approval of a good neighbor agreement, and I just wondered if you wanted to clarify approval by who? Now you're on mute.
Okay, try again. Approval by council, administration, and the provider.
Okay.
Everybody has to agree. I mean, you're going to have to have spiders.
Okay.
So everybody has to agree before they're going to start.
Okay. And do you accept that, Councilmember Mum, since you were the second here of that? Okay. Okay. Any discussion about the amendment? Councilmember Kinnear.
So remember, we do have a noon cutoff. I got this amendment in at four minutes to noon today. So I made, just so people know, this is not last minute. We were abiding by the rules.
All right. And you are a strong proponent of that rule, so I'm glad you were paying attention. Okay. All those in favor of the amendment, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Councilmember
Nay.
Okay. That's a six to one on the amendment. All right. That's deferred to the 18th. I had one more item, actually, I remembered. Ordinance number C.36111, which was funding the Clark Avenue landslide. Mr. Njose circulated an amendment to that ordinance to reflect the anticipated revenue from FEMA earlier today, and I was looking for a motion to substitute the, his version of the ordinance. Councilmember Mum.
I just want to have clarity, because we asked him to find, I haven't opened that yet. We asked him to find another location for the initial part of the funds not to come out of our contingency reserves. Was he able to do that?
He did not do that.
So I still have a concern
Okay.
of it coming out of contingency reserves. I'll discuss it with you offline.
Okay. Well, it's on, it's on for today's agenda, so, so I guess if you wanted
Is it on consent?
No, it's on, it's on legislative agenda, special budget ordinances.
Okay. So I will not support the motion right now until we get that cleared up.
Okay. Is there anyone else who wants to make a motion to substitute his version, which doesn't preclude other changes?
I will. I'll, so moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
I am, Mr. President.
Yes.
I need to comment after this.
Okay. So there's a motion to substitute that ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So it's been motioned and seconded, and Councilmember Kinnear, you have the first comment.
I understand that we do want, we're hoping that FEMA funds would, and we didn't want this to come out of the contingency reserve. I'm just here to say that we are under a very tight timeline because if this hillside, if it starts raining and this hillside starts to move, we're in deep doo-doo. So it's really important that this work be done as quickly as possible, as safely as possible. So regardless, it needs to be, it needs to be done, and I'm hopeful that FEMA will cover it, but it may not. So it, and Councilmember Mum, you may have another idea of where the money should come from.
If I may go, yeah, it was reported to us, we have four million in unallocated reserves, and so that was my request, that it be modified, and we also requested that you look at the risk pool. So I will work between now and six o'clock to get that clarified.
Thank you, Councilmember Mum. All right. So the motion before us is to at least initially substitute the special budget ordinance Mr. Njose sent us today. Any further discussion about that? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
One nay? Any abstentions? All right. So that's six to one to substitute at this point, and we'll look for further information before six o'clock. All right. I think that brings us to the end of many changes, and so that would get us to the amended consent agenda. Ms. Fister.
Reports, contracts, and claims. Number one, contract amendment with American Medical Response Service Incorporated to include the use of basic life support ambulances in the interest of patient safety and continuity of service. Item number two was approved last week. Item number three, report of the mayor of pending claims and payments of previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library through September 24, 2021. Total $14,328,949.11 with Parks and Library claims approved of respective boards. Warrants excluding Parks and Library total $12,44,642.48. Item number four, city council meeting minutes for July 1, September 20, and September 23, 2021. Item number five, UTB 1343 Amendment Number One with Washington State Department of Transportation for work done in conjunction with the SR 902 Geiger Roundabout Water Relocation. And item number six, contract with McKay Meters Incorporated Nova Scotia, Canada for paid parking equipment to provide the city with single and dual space parking meters in support from August 1, 2021 through July 31, 2026. Estimated $664,000 deferred from August 30, 2021 agenda.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right. The consent agenda is approved. I just want to make a note for our agenda at six. We have special considerations S1A and B, A as pepper balls, B as ballistic shields. My plan, unless there's an objection, is to take any testimony from the public on both of those at the same time, since they're quite related, but we'll vote separately on them. So, Councilmember Kinnear.
I know that you and I discussed this. Next week, we have two items on the agenda that are controversial, and we do have the mayor's speech, state of the city. We do have Indigenous people day. Do we want to move our two non-controversial legislative items to 3:30 and devote more time to Indigenous people and to the mayor's, the mayor's state of the city?
I'll hear from other councilmembers. I have a slight preference for keeping the two legislative items on the legislative agenda, just because it's a little easier for people to testify if there's nothing else. But I'm happy to hear from anyone else or hear a motion to move those up to the briefing. Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you. These two items have generated a lot of interest from the citizens of Spokane via emails and others, so I think I would be in favor of letting them testify tonight, their positions on this, before we go further. It is difficult at three o'clock, especially in consideration of people who are working.
I was talking about next week, though.
Yep.
Next week, okay. Well, I still think testimony in the evening is my preference.
All right. I'm seeing Councilmember Strattan.
I would disagree that, to keep it, because I think if people want to call in and share their opinions, I think it's easier to do it. The regular meeting, yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to hear from as many people as we can.
All right. I saw a nod from Councilmember Burke. All right. I'm not seeing a majority in favor of doing that, but I appreciate any ideas always about how we can be more effective. So thanks, Councilmember Kinnear. All right. Oh, yes. We have one notice that the Madam Clerk is going to read that pursuant to Oh, yes, we have one notice that the Madam Clerk is going to read that pursuant to a legal matter, so, Madam Clerk.
Okay. Notice to employees of unfair labor practice. Case number 132962-U-20, decision number 13353, PECB 2021. State law gives you the right to self-organize, join, or assist labor employee organizations, bargain collectively through a representative of your choice, refuse to pay dues to a union unless you have affirmatively agreed to pay such payments. The Washington State Public Employment Relations Commission, PERC, conducted a legal proceeding, issued a ruling that the city of Spokane committed an unfair labor practice, and ordered that this notice be posted to employees. We unlawfully changed the pay structure of computer professionals represented by the Spokane Managerial and Professional Association without providing the union notice and an opportunity for bargaining. To remedy our unfair labor practices, we will restore the status quo ante by reinstating the partial leave benefit that existed for the employees in the affected bargaining unit prior to the unilateral change found unlawful in this order. We will give notice to and upon request, negotiating good faith with the Spokane Managerial and Professional Association before changing mandatory subjects impacted by a change to employee overtime exemptions. We will not in any other manner interfere with restraining or coercing its employees in the exercise of their collective bargaining rights under the laws of the state of Washington, signed by the HR Director, City of Spokane.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, for reading that. As you might have figured out, that's a result of a legal proceeding that we were required to read that notice at our meeting today. With that, we are going to be adjourned until 6:00 p.m., and we'll see you later this evening.